Thank you everyone for being here tonight. We'll bring tonight's city council meeting in order. Please rise for a pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Under the consent agenda, I'd like to add item K supplemental payment summary.
I'll second. Motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations. Check.
At this time, Commander Shelley Rolando will present the monthly Anoka County Sheriff's report to council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Custodial arrests and significant events for December of 2019 DWIs. There were six DWI arrests in December. Two of the arrests stemmed from single-vehicle property damage crashes. Two of the arrests stemmed from a hit-and-run crash where both the drivers were intoxicated and failed failed sobriety tests. The other two arrests were the result of driving conduct witnessed by deputies. Fifth-degree controlled substance and warrant arrest. Deputy Arkan and Deputy Olson conducted a traffic stop on a vehicle that was leaving a residence known for criminal activities. The vehicle had equipment violations. The deputies spoke to the driver and passenger separately, and their stories of why they were in the area did not make sense. The male passenger gave a name which did not come back on file with DVS. Upon him being further questioned, the male admitted he had a warrant for his arrest and had switched his first name with his middle name. The male passenger was taken into custody. In the passenger side of the vehicle, on the floor were two glass pipes which contained a white powdery substance. A small plastic baggie was also on the floor. The substance did test positive for methamphetamine. Several hundred hypodermic needles were also located. The male did have two warrants for his arrest, one for controlled substance and one for drug paraphernalia which were confirmed. The male was transported to jail and the female was released on scene. First-degree burglary and second-degree assault. Deputies were called to a burglary report. Upon arrival, deputies learned that three unknown males had forced their way into a home and assaulted the homeowner. The victim advised the males were asking him where the money was and where the guns were. The victim didn't know what these males were talking about. The victim was struck three times in the head with a gun. The victim was then held at gunpoint while two males ransacked his residence. The male was then put into a back bedroom and told to stay there. The male left and went to his neighbor's house once he no longer heard any noise. Located outside, near another residence was a bag containing medications, an Xbox, and some games. The victim reported he had $3,000 taken from a safe. The incident is still under investigation, and the male victim said he did not know who the males were that came to his house. Fraud. A male received a phone call from Microsoft advising him that the Zoho Assist could be removed from his computer and he would be refunded $400. The victim then gave the male access to his computer. A short time later, the victim was transferred to a female who said he would need to type in the $400 amount on a screen. Prior to the screen switching, the amount was changed to $4,000. The female advised she was unable to go back and that the victim needed to refund them $3,600. She told the victim to get $3,600 in American Express gift cards and give her the information from them. The victim did go purchase $3,600 in American Express cards and gave the information to the suspects. The female suspect then told the victim that those cards would not work for payment, at which time the victim's wife gave their bank account number and pinned to the suspects. The female suspect advised the victims that they would need to go obtain more cards since the ones did not work. The victims realized the following day that this was a fraud and found out that all the gift cards had been used in Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Virginia. They did not have their bank account access, so that was closed. The victim reported he did not know much about computers and didn't even know if he had this Zoho Assist on his. The gift card use was reported to the jurisdictions where the transactions had occurred. And it's so sad that people fall for these kinds of scams all the time and they lose thousands of dollars. So, once again, my thing is if you have some odd call like that or something goofy happens, don't go out and get gift cards. Call the sheriff's office. We'll come help you and let you know if this is something that is truly happening or if you're gonna be victimized, because we don't like to see that happen. And finally, fleeing a peace officer in a motor vehicle obstruction of legal process and warrant arrest. Deputy Quam was in the area when a report came out of a male who was traveling to his home that had a warrant for his arrest. Deputy Quam saw the suspect vehicle and attempted to stop it, at which time the suspect fled towards the residence at a high rate of speed. The male suspect then fled into the house. This male has been known to possess handguns, so immediate entry was not made. Several attempts were made to get the male suspect to come out of the house willingly. These were unsuccessful. Entry was made into the house and the suspect was located hiding in the attic. The suspect was taken into custody and transported to jail.
Any questions for Shelley tonight?
I have a question. Can you tell me the area that these burglary, that burglary was in? Maybe not the street, but the general area in East Bethel?
About 245th.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions from the audience tonight? Get off easy again.
I know, it's good. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks, Shelley.
Fire chief. Good evening.
Good evening, council, mayor. Happy New Year. We finished up 2019 with 685 calls. That represents about an eight and a half percent increase from a previous year of 2018 at 633. Sixty-five calls in December, forty-six of those were medicals, had seven vehicle accidents, five alarms, fire alarms, and CO alarms, two mutual aid building fires, and we had five other calls. One was a vehicle fire, I believe, and fire alarm calls. All in all, calls keep going up. What I'd like to do is just kind of go over 2019 very quickly. Sure. But I think I'm gonna go over to the desk if that's okay. All right. So, 2019, this is just a very quick review. So, I always do kind of a snapshot. So, basically every 12.79 hours or almost every 13 hours, we're gonna go on a call. And that's a little bit closer together than last year, but that's our average. We had a fire loss in 2019 of $853,700. Basically, that's almost $100 per hour throughout the year. So, even the hour that we sit here in the council meeting, you know, you can equate that to $100 in fire loss. Out of every 7.1 households, needed some type of emergency service from East Bethel Fire, whether it was a medical call, or fire, or fire alarm, or whatever. And out of 18.17 residents or visitors of East Bethel, they needed emergency services from the fire department. And then 7.6 days, one, every 7.6 days was the average that we attended a vehicle crash to assist either the deputies or medics or whatever. And this is, the last one is really interesting. So, every 21.36 hours, an East Bethel citizen or visitor went to the hospital via ambulance with the assistance of the fire department. That means that we assisted in either medical or responding to a call for medical. And as I've said before many times, we package the patient for the ambulance. So, when you look at our incidents, you can see 685 in 2019, and you can see our gradual trend up. Our four, five-year call history, which kind of puts more things in a current frame of mind. You can see through the bar graph there that, you know, that too demonstrates the trending. And then, calls by station. And this is interesting, because when you look at the station one day responders, there was 373 calls, one a day that we required those people to go out and take care of. Same thing with the station two daytime responders. They had 367, almost the same. But the night responders had half of that, really both stations. And then our duty officer calls. Now, that's where we only send one firefighter, one fire officer to call, like, and those would be the legal burns, the recreational fires, check that, smoke in the outside, smoke in the area, or even fire alarms. They went out 88 times.
So, Mark, can I ask you a question on the daytime calls?
Yeah.
Is it, our guys, it's an all-call when station one or two, because I see you got two different numbers there?
It's an all-call, but you gotta remember that our daytime people are also responsible for the weekend calls.
Okay, okay.
So, that's why station one and station two is different, because they're, you know, on the weekend, they have their own station calls to answer.
Thank you.
Yep. Type of calls, by far, medicals. And you can see our fires, and that would include grass fires, building fires, mutual aid calls, vehicle accidents. That number has been growing a little bit. And we continue to help our neighbors out as they help us out on fire mutual aids.
So, Mark, is that, when it's 12 mutual aids, is that, is that both going to and from?
Nope, that's just going.
That's just outgoing?
Yeah, that's outgoing.
Okay.
I could look up what the incoming was. The incoming mutual aids were probably four or five. I think a year ago, we were a little bit higher on the mutual aids. We're starting to see a few more mutual aids on the medical side for like Lindwood and where they have a serious, a serious or a critical patient and just need extra help. We've had a couple of those. So, those medicals are right in line with our 67%. It's kind of interesting, council, that our medicals have been 67 to 70% of our call volume for probably the past five, six years, as far as the percentage. So, that's, everything's kind of stayed within, in the percentage range. So, here's some information that I think is important. Our average numbers of firefighters per call has dipped to 5.85. It's dipped from, a couple years ago, we were at nine, and then we went to eight. I think last year was 7.1 or something like that. So, that's something we gotta take a look at. That average response time, that's from somebody, that's when the call comes out to when they get, when they get to the scene of the incident. Eight minutes and 45 seconds. So, they gotta drive to the station, and if it's at night, they gotta get dressed, drive to the station, get the fire truck, probably wait maybe a minute to see who's coming, and then drive to the scene and start doing their job. So, actually, that's a very good time, very good time. And then our average time on scene is just over 24 minutes. I mentioned the fire loss. That's up a little bit from last year, about $100,000, but down from a few years ago, so. And once I, once again, this is a new record call year, 685. All right. So, altogether, your firefighters put in 7,000 hours. That's an average of 195 hours per firefighter. Not all of that is compensated either. So...
Mark?
Yeah?
That eight minutes, 45 seconds includes putting their gear on.
Yeah.
When we've done that summer thing, it takes us about eight minutes just to put the gear on.
Absolutely, yeah. That's why I'm saying that eight minutes and 45 seconds is a very good time.
That's a very good time.
All right. When do the calls come in? Well, it looks like 3:00 PM or 4:00 PM. That's when we have the most calls. But you can kind of see from when the day, daytime starts from 7:00 AM, really until the end of the day, 11 o'clock, you know, those are our busy hours. And calls per week, I couldn't tell you why Monday is, has more calls than anybody else. You know, we were kind of talking about this, I think, last year and almost joking a little bit. I, you know, there's no rhyme or reason. Even, you know, we've got a lot of data that we can run trend lines on now, and even with the trend lines, it just doesn't make sense.
So, is that, is that all calls, or is that just?
That's all. Nope.
Medical, or is it fire?
All, all calls.
Right, very good.
Yeah. So, I would suppose Monday would be because people have been sick all weekend and now they think it's time to go to the hospital, which is fine, but, you know, you know, that's just one theory. And Saturday, maybe there's just more accidents around the home and more chance for people to be sick.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So, and then when you look month by month, you know, I would guess that if somebody asked me how many calls do we run per month, I would say in the neighborhood of 50 to 55 on an average. So... Now, this is kind of interesting. I had this, I ran the data on this about when is our critical time? This, those numbers represent response per call, number of responders per call. And I did it in three-hour blocks from midnight until midnight. So, you can see that from 6:00 to 9:00 is our low point, and, well, really from 3:00 on, and then there again in the afternoon. And I think the number, the 6:00 to 2100 hours, 8:00 there, 6 to 9, excuse me. I think the numbers are skewed there a little bit, because those calls that happened at training, then you've got, you've got a, you know, big call, you know, people go on there. You've got, you know, 35 people per call. So, and then once again, this is how I calculated $853,000, property and content, and that's what's been reported to the state fire marshal's office.
Is that kind of typical of the last several years, or population growth?
As far as fire loss?
Yes.
Yeah.
Damage?
It's a little bit higher. You know, it all depends what burns and when it burns, but, you know, as the populations increased, yeah, you could, you could argue that, you know, you're gonna have an increase in fire loss. It probably has something to do with inflation, too.
Oh, yeah.
Mark, you mentioned that the number of calls are up 8%?
Eight and a half percent, yeah.
How does that relate to other communities in the area?
Almost right on, mayor.
Everyone's seen it.
Yeah, pretty much everyone has seen it. We, the chiefs tend to, tend to talk a lot, you know, between our groups. And, you know, I know that I visited with Ham Lake last week or the week before, and Don had indicated same thing, same thing in Oak Grove.
What about more populous areas, maybe closer to the city? Do you know if the, you know, the bigger cities are seeing increases, too?
I don't think they're seeing 8% increase, but I think they're seeing, you know, the minimum 5% increase. We're just now, see, part of this, like, today came out, the Joint Powers Group came out with, we filled in a spreadsheet for everybody, and that just, you know, came out today, and that'll tell us what everybody did, you know, and what their calls were and things like that. So, we'll get that information probably in another couple of weeks.
I was thinking, you know, if this is systematic and it's gonna keep doing this, I mean, it's gonna have effect on all these cities in terms of
Right.
Staffing and equipment and things like that. And that's not a normal growth rate, you know, if that continues.
Right. So, the, what really bothers me is the, this graph, and it's the red and the yellow bars, the daytime crew. You're gonna get to a point where we're gonna be, well, we are burning these people out.
Yeah.
And, you know, because we answer, we answer a lot of calls during the day.
Can you put the slide up there again that had the calls per year?
Sure.
Show the graph.
Let's see here. This one?
Yeah.
That blip of 528 in 2003, that was the meth houses.
That was what?
That was meth houses. That year, there was 20-plus meth houses that fire department got called on.
I remember that. So, 16 to 17, that's when the big jump was.
Yep.
It's stayed up a percent. So, did we change anything in terms of service or response?
No. Same, same formula, mayor, for response. You know, what we respond to, same formula for how we respond. It's, you know...
We certainly did get a population spike in those years, not, not 8%. That was actually more than that.
No. I was wondering if that was more demographic, that jump, where maybe we had a population that was aging a little bit.
One year, though. That's still...
Yeah, I know.
Or even four years. That's a big jump, over four years.
Population growth in that period was around 4% to 5%.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's possible, though.
Yeah. So, now with the higher density, density housing moving in, I haven't quite figured that out. You know, I've done a little bit of homework on it.
Well, then the demographics change again, because now you've got younger
Right.
You know, theoretically more healthy people and...
So, yeah.
But, everything changes, so...
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any questions, council? Any questions for the audience tonight for our fire chief? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. I want to pull item J, please.
Okay.
Second, and I'd like to pull item C.
C?
C.
Okay.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing none. To motions all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Suzanne, item C.
Item C, on page 34, there's, next to my name, it said, it talks about provoked and unprovoked and provoked. Well, those words are backwards. It should be provoked first and then unprovoked.
Okay.
Everybody find it?
We have that changed, Jack?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for item C on the consent agenda with the noted changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing none. To motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Tim, item J.
Mark, you want to take care of this, or you want me to do it?
Go right ahead.
Um, I'd like to introduce Miranda Hudsonek. Miranda is a firefighter that has completed all requirements of approbation period and has met all qualifications required by the department. The fire chief recommends that firefighter Miranda Hudsonek be appointed an active firefighter status as of February 1, 2020, and I just want to say congratulations and thanks for volunteering. And with that, I'll prove item J as written.
Second.
Suzanne, second. Any discussion? Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I look forward to a long career as a firefighter. Any other discussion? To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
On to new business. Jack.
Item 6.0D1, 2020 joint powers agreement, JPA street maintenance projects. Cities of Coon Rapids, Andover, Anoka, Brooklyn Center, Columbia Heights, Ham Lake, Monomeda, and Fridley entered into a joint powers agreement on February 1, 2005, for the purpose of collectively bidding certain street maintenance services. The North Metro Street Maintenance Program, JPA, allows smaller cities to achieve more economies of scale in the bidding process and potentially achieve lower bids from contractors for crack sealing, seal coating, striping, and other street maintenance services. City of East Bethel joined this group in February of 2008. The city of Coon Rapids is the lead agency for this group. As the lead agency, they draft the specifications, solicit bids, and provide necessary documents for member cities to sign to participate in the program. The agreement is structured such that it permits each member city to accept or reject bids for their portion of the proposed contract. Each city will pay the contractor directly for their share of the work, and contracts will be awarded separately for the various items. The city of East Bethel has realized savings of up to 20% over previous costs for these services through participation in the JPA street maintenance program. The following projects are recommended to be bid as part of the 2020 JPA street maintenance program. These projects have been identified in the 2020-2024 Street Capital Improvement Plan, developed by the Roads Commission and approved at their January 14, 2020 meeting. First project is to chip seal 76,000 square yards as part of the annual street maintenance program in Trioke Circle, Oakwood Meadows, and Norland Boundary Subdivision, stripe 150,000 feet of pavement, linear feet of pavement, and perform 100,000 linear feet of crack sealing. The projects are listed in the maps on your attachment. The estimate for budget for seal coating, crack sealing, and striping, the above-listed streets is $200,000. These projects will be funded from the Street Capital Fund. Bids for this work will be received by late February, early March, and presented to city council for final consideration at the March 23, 2020 meeting. The Road Commission and city staff recommend city council approval of the proposed city projects for bidding as part of the 2020 North Metro Street Maintenance JPA program.
Move for approval of the proposed city projects for bidding as part of the 2020 North Metro Street Maintenance Program, JPA.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Jack, do we have, we've got kind of a good track history of making this money go a long ways and have, be able to do some extra projects. Do we have a list of extra projects if that happens again?
We do, and we, to date, and we've never had the amount we submitted. They've always come well over what the bids are. So, generally, there are funds available to do extra work. We'll wait and see what those are, but generally, we've been running about 70 or 80% of what the estimates are compared to the bids received.
All right, yeah.
And what we've done in those situations is we were able to contract directly with the contractor for the same price and add these additions to the work.
Okay. This continues to be a very lucrative program for all the cities, so...
It certainly does.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. On to department reports.
Item 7B1, consider approval of resolution 2020-007 Municipal State Aid Street Funds Advance for the Trunk Highway 65 East Service Road Project. City of East Bethel is committed to construct the Trunk Highway 65 East Service Road Project from 187th Lane to Viking Boulevard. Mind dot is obligated funding in the amount of up to $3.2 million through the Highway Safety Improvement Program grants to construct the frontage road. Due to the need to commence construction prior to the availability to draw payments from this grant, Mind Mendot allows cities to advance funds from their municipal state aid accounts to cover these temporary gaps or fund projects that exceed their annual allocation. To advance MSA funds, the council must prove the attached resolutions, Municipal State Aid, Street Funds Advance, and authorize the city engineer to execute the municipal request to, to reserve advanced funding. The MSA advancement will only be needed as interim funding until monies can be drawn from the Highway Safety Improvement Service Road Grant. The city is not obligated to use the advancement of these funds. This action only reserves the funds in the event that they are needed. MSA funds can be advanced for project cost up to four times the annual city allocation, or three million dollars, whichever's less. Municipal State Aid and Street Funds are an allocation from the Minnesota Department of Transportation and are separate and apart from the city's general fund and have no impact on the city tax levy or tax rate. The total advancement requested is one million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and one dollars. This advancement will not delay or postpone any projects on the city's two thousand and twenty dash twenty-four Street Capital Improvement Plans. As an interim backup source of funding, staff recommends council support the advancement by approval of resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero seven Municipal State Aid Street Fund Advance. Staff further requests that council authorize the city engineer to execute the municipal request to reserve advanced funding and forward the appropriate documents to the Mendot State Aid Office for consideration.
I'll make a motion, uh, to pass resolution number twenty, uh, twenty dash zero seven, uh, for the Municipal State and Street Funds Advance Resolution.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. And there's a second portion of the recommendation.
Correct. The second portion of the recommendation is to authorize the city engineer to execute the municipal request to respond to the advanced funding and forward the appropriate documents to the Mendot State Aid Office for consideration.
So we don't have a resolution to that? We just need a motion?
Well, there, there's an attachment in your packet that's a signed document that grants authorization for the city engineer to perform this.
Is that an attachment to the resolution, or is this a separate?
It's on page fifty-nine and sixteen.
Yeah.
That's a municipal, it's, what it is, it's a municipal request to reserve advanced funding. This is the form that MSA requests that we send them.
Okay.
But you, you would like to have a secret, separate motion on it?
Correct.
Okay, that's what it's getting.
Okay, so with that in mind, I will make a motion, um, that to authorize the city engineer to execute the, uh, municipal request to reserve advanced funding and forward the appropriate documents to the, um, Mendot State Aid Office for consideration.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Jack, City Administrator.
Item seven G one, Upper Rum River WMO Proposed Twenty Twenty-One Budgets. Staff, council's requested review and consider approval of the East Bethel share of the Upper Rum River WMO two thousand and twenty-one budgets. The Upper Rum River WMO is a joint powers organization consisting of Bethel, East Bethel, Ham Lake, now then Oak Grove and Saint Francis. Through the Upper Rum River Water Management Organization, these cities jointly address water resources in this watershed. This organization is operated by an appointed board which consists of two representatives from each member locality. The Upper Rum River WMO Joint Powers Agreement provides rules and procedures for operation of the organization. City Councilperson Tim Harrington and citizen member Roger Loesch are East Bethel's representative on this WMO. The Upper Rum River WMO's draft budget is submitted to each member city for their input and is attached for review. Any requests to modify this budget need to be submitted to the Upper Rum River WMO prior to their May fifth, two thousand and twenty meeting. After that date, in absent any comments or direction from East Bethel, our portion of the budget will be considered approved at the level indicated for two thousand and twenty-one. The proposed two thousand and twenty-one Upper Rum River WMO budget is forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, as compared to the two thousand and twenty budget of fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. East Bethel's portion of the two thousand and twenty-one budget as presented in attachment two is proposed to be nine thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars, or a decrease of nine point four percent from the two thousand and twenty city share of ten thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. This decrease is due to the completion of the update to the ten-year watershed management plan. The update was a requirement of the Board of Water and Solar Resources, the agency that directs the operational and statutory responsibilities of the WMOs. This budget also includes a re-categorization of two items from operating to non-operating expenses. Those line items are grant applications and facilitation of technical advisory committees. Had the budget lines remained the same in their original format, the city of East Bethel's costs would have been reduced by an additional four hundred and forty dollars. The two thousand and twenty-one budget is proposed at forty-four thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty cents. Two thousand and twenty-one budget represents a sixteen percent reduction from the two thousand and twenty amount. Staff recommends that city council consider approval of the Upper Rum River Water Management Organization Draft Two Thousand and Twenty-One Budget.
Move for approval of the Upper Rum River Water Management Organization Draft, two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Second. Motion made second. Discussion. Jack or Tim, can, I'm, I'm not following something quite right. So what year budget? What year was the plan updated, all the work that was done for it?
Tenure?
Yeah.
We just got done with it.
So in nineteen?
Yeah, it's in nineteen.
Some of it was also done in eighteen, too.
Right. And, and so, again, why did the budget increase so much last year?
Because of the cost for the consultants for doing the update to the ten-year plan that Bowser required.
To, to, to pay for the changes?
Correct.
But that's this year's budget. Are we, are they just paying for it this year? I, I don't get. You said the work was done in, go to the, go to your write-up. It's easier to look at your, your write-up. That's the table I'm looking at. It's the first page of the, uh, agenda item. Yeah, just page up. Right there. So the work was done in nineteen, but the budget was increased in twenty?
Well, the, what we're doing is approving, th- this budget is approved for next year.
No, I understand that.
We're in the two thousand and twenty budget, so this is completion of this within this year. So there's still outstanding payments that have to be made to cover.
Okay.
Those consulting costs.
All right, okay, okay. So, so then my real question is, so for two thousand and twenty-one, we're not, the plan's already done.
Correct.
So why doesn't the budget drop back to the two thousand and nineteen level?
The extra monies are for the projects that were identified that Bowser wants to see.
Okay, that's, that's where I'm getting at, so. Cause in your write-up, you say it's a nine percent decrease because they're not doing the plan.
Correct.
But it's not really true, cause it's, the fact we're not doing the plan is probably more like a fifty percent decrease, but there's other budget items that are taking that budget. Okay, okay, okay. That makes sense. I under- if you understand the projects, that's why you do the plan, so. Okay. So any other discussion?
I have a question. How can Bowser tell them to do a project that is above what they should be budgeted for? Because in my mind, they should be dropping back down to the two thousand and nineteen levels. And Bowser has a bigger budget, from what I understand, so I think they should pay for it if they want them to do stuff that costs extra.
Well, unfortunately, these are mandates from the state that, uh, are dictated to the localities, in this case, the WMOs. They're the ones responsible for this. Bowser doesn't fund the projects or the plans. They more or less give direction and set the policy on how these WMOs are to operate, so then it's up to the responsibility of WMOs to do the plans that Bowser requires and then come up with projects to identify those needs and direct, address those concerns.
I didn't see exactly what those projects were. I might have, they might be in here, but I missed them. Does anybody know what they are?
Tim, have, have we been given a copy of the actual plan yet? I don't think we've seen it for.
Well, you know, we, we just approved it because we were having trouble with Ham Lake. So I don't know if, if the tenure plan's actually out yet. You know, we finally got Ham Lake straight.
Is there a draft plan out? Or, or that's what?
There should be something out, yeah, cause we, we finally got things straightened away with Ham Lake, so.
Okay. Cause the plan would talk about what projects.
Yeah, what project that the Upper Rum will do. I, I know this year, I think they're doing something on the Upper Rum. They're gonna, on the Rum River, they're gonna do some bank.
Bank.
Bank, bank work or something like that, so.
Oh, I did see that somewhere.
Is that, is that?
I, I can get you a list of those projects. They are identified in the plan.
I think I read about them maybe in the community bulletin or something.
Yeah, then there's, there's some carp, some carp work they're gonna do, like on, on, uh, a couple of lakes, too, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes.
Item seven G two, consider approval of an ordinance to revise City Code, Chapter eighteen, Article four of the Regulation of Sale of Tobacco. On December twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, the President signed legislation to amend the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act and raise the federal minimum age to buy tobacco products from eighteen to twenty-one years. It is now legal for a retailer to sell any tobacco product, including cigarettes, cigars, and e-cigarettes, to anyone under twenty-one. FDA regulates all tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, hookah tobacco, and cigars. By raising the age to buy tobacco products, the federal government is replicating what a number of states have been doing. Nineteen states and the District of Columbia and more than five hundred cities have already raised the minimum age to buy tobacco to twenty-one. As this is a federal law, all states will have to comply. Ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero one updates East Bethel's Code of Ordinance to reflect these changes. Staff requests that City Council approve the amendment to City Code as presented in attachment to the ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero one, summary and adoption.
Move for adoption of ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero one, summary and adoption.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Jack, do we have any, uh, obligation to send anything to our current licensees? Obviously, they're gonna know about it, but, I mean, from a legal perspective, is there anything we need to?
They've all called us, inquiring what their direction is, and we've told them to do the twenty, follow the federal law. If this is passed, then we will send them a notification if this has been adopted in order.
So we will send a notification to them? Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes.
Item seven G three, City Town Hall Meeting. The Spring Town Hall Meeting has been held since two thousand and five. The meeting is generally held in April and is proposed for a date that doesn't conflict with any other municipal or school district meetings. Staff has reviewed and found there to be no conflicts with the evening meeting scheduled for the city, ISD fifteen and eight thirty-one in April, two thousand and twenty, for the dates listed below. Available dates in April for the meeting are Wednesday, April first, Thursday, April ninth, Thursday, April sixteenth, Tuesday, April twenty-first, Wednesday, April twenty-second, Thursday, April twenty-third, Wednesday, April twenty-ninth, and Thursday, April thirtieth. All other dates in April are scheduled for City Council, Commission, Committee meetings, including the Sunrise River WMO and the Upper Rum River WMO and the Booster Day meeting. The date for this meeting needs to be set in order to place the notice in our spring newsletter. This newsletter will be sent to the printer by around February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, and distribute to city residents by the week of March, ninth through the thirteenth. Staff is requesting City Council to set a date for the Spring Town, Town Hall Meeting.
Okay, perhaps start with dates that don't work for folks. The first does not work for me other than that.
Tuesdays don't work for me. The ninth doesn't work for me. Wednesdays are kind of hard, so I prefer a Thursday, the sixteenth or thirtieth.
So any, any of the Thursdays are open? Except the second. And let's make it a nicer day. I'll suggest the twenty-third. I'll make a motion that we have the Spring Town Hall meeting on Thursday, April twenty-third.
I'll second that one.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none. To the motion, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Our Spring Town Hall meeting is set.
Item seven G four, set an agenda for the February third, two thousand and twenty work meeting. Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for February third, two thousand and twenty, at seven P M. Items recommended for council discussion and review could include, and may not be limited to, the following. A work meeting with the Parks Commission, code enforcement discussion on non-compliant CUPs. Purchase of a city drone, and I'd like to add one more to it, would be a discussion of the negotiations going on with this Athens Township regarding the Prairie Pine subdivision, the two hundred and forty-fifth Avenue paving project. With this, staff recommends City Council set the topics listed above for the February third, two thousand and twenty work meeting and the topic added.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the listed above work meeting topics to include Prairie Pine subdivision.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Staff report.
I have nothing further to add.
Okay, Council report, Randy.
Well, I would just like to remind everyone that, um, the city has made arrangements to create an event. Um, on February eighth, from noon until six P M, is game night. Uh, we ask that you stop by and, uh, if you wanna bring a game or just come in and sit down and enjoy a game, we'll have a bunch of games ready, you know, for people to play if they want, so, uh, come and socialize with your neighbors. Thanks.
Suzanne.
All right, well, first I'd like to give, um, my condolences, condolences to Pat Sweeney and Mayor Ross for lots of family members. I also did booster days and I went to the amazing Waffle Breakfast, and I was very impressed. Um, I do have a question from a phone call, and my question has to do with renting this place. Somebody asked me, why when people rent out the senior center, they're not allowed to use the dumpster if they're paying for it anyway? I mean, they're not paying for the trash, but they're, have a fee.
I wasn't aware that was part of their policy.
Oh, the, the, they told me they had to take all the trash from that last thing, um, and put it in vehicles and take it someplace else.
It's, it's probably because it's really not a dumpster. There's just two or three trashcans out there, so they fill up pretty quickly if the seniors have an event. So it's not a dumpster. They're just the regular trashcans that the ace or the garbage haulers put out for homes.
So the city doesn't have a dumpster around here that they could use, or?
The only dumpster that we have, we, there's one behind the public, Public Works Building, but it's locked up. It's behind the building, so it's not accessible.
Yeah, we, the city uses regular garbage cans. I see them every Friday lined up out there, so, it's like a half dozen of them. Yeah, we, the city uses regular garbage cans. I see them every Friday lined up out there, so it's like a half dozen of them.
All right, thank you. I didn't know.
Well, I think it's, yeah, it may be worthwhile to follow up, like, you know, if that's a problem. I could see someone having an event all of a sudden, the end, it's like, oh, it's garbage you gotta take with. It's, it's not something you expect, at least, so.
No, it's, they're pretty disappointed in that, and I think it could actually continue to reduce our rental of that place, so.
Well, it might make it attractive for more people to rent it, too. You know, it could be a turnoff for some events if you don't have a way to dispose of your waste.
Can you talk to seniors and see for something we can do to remedy that, so?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Tom.
The Road Commission met the fourteenth of January, I think, and the topics were pretty much discussed this evening, and I believe anything that came before us was approved. That's all.
Okay. Tim?
Last Thursday, I attended the JPA Fire Department meeting. There was a discussion on the twenty twenty-one budget. It will be approved in April by, it will be voted on by elected officials and the fire chiefs. And second, we did four hundred and thirty-nine people Saturday, and the auxiliary just wanted me to say thanks to everybody that supported them, and we're looking forward to next year. That's all I've got.
Yeah, I'll just add from my report, the waffle breakfast, breakfast again was something to look forward to next year now already, so it's a great event. Weather kind of kept the airlift away again, but that happens, but it's a nice community event, so. And that is all I have. So with that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Meeting's adjourned.